It's Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020 at 6:10. We're meeting in the Rockingham Town Hall Lower Theater Meeting Room. And there's a link for the Zoom if you'd like to join in that way. We need to call the order, the meeting of a Rockingham Board of Health. And we have one item on the agenda. Just One Center Street update.
So Chuck Wise, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, this will be a quick review. One Center Street, the legal proceedings are going on as planned. We're still on schedule. Uh, it is unfortunate. We have generated a fair amount of legal bills associated with this. Right now we're at about $2,800 and counting, but the end result is that the, the service, that the legal requirements for service are being followed and that the process is ongoing.
Okay. And legal matters can be added to the property owners, correct?
Yes. At the end, uh, this additional procedure, I'd like to thank Josh Stern for the, just the sheer volume of work he was able to produce very quickly. All this, all these costs are associated with the cleanup of that property. So it's, it's ultimately going to be a lien on that property.
Right. Yes.
Chuck B. Golick, uh, did we have to reserve that order?
With a, um, variation which basically we reserved everything. Nuisance ordinance, health order, all at the same time, essentially having the sheriff's department do it. So it's basically the same thing, but just with the sheriff's department.
Also, uh, is there anything on the, uh, lien, uh, when we do the lien, is there anything as, uh, attaching a closing date when we can foreclose on the lien if we, uh, we need to?
That I'm not so clear on. I'll get an answer to that question.
Yeah, just curious. I, uh, the, my expert tells me that there is a way you can do that. I don't, I didn't get into it too deeply, but.
Yeah.
The sheriff's fees will also, uh, be headed that way, right?
Yes. And that, that's really the, the true regret here is that the, the cost that we've already incurred, which is not include the sheriff's fees is already double what it would cost to just simply clean up the property if we were to do it now.
Agreed. Okay. Thank you very much.
Just one other item with that real quickly. Uh, the owners did come in and see me today. They also have some. I thought it.
Oh, maybe it is. Sorry.
There it comes. Can you hear it now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So they did come in and speak with me, uh, this afternoon. They also have some utility issues. Um, we're going to do some research. There's a couple of items that, that we're not quite clear on that extend back to 2017. And then we'll hopefully get some indication as to where those items stand on top of some of the other issues. Uh, as I explained to, uh, the owners, you know, we have issues about the health and nuisance issues. We have issues about the utility arrears and we have issues with taxes and arrears. So if they want to get in the good graces, we've got to get all three things completed. So they're aware. We'll see how far we can get, but just wanted to let you know, we did have that conversation today.
One other question, Chuck. We have here a, uh, it looks like the, uh, tax, tax bills or something. Is that included in your presentation or is that coming down the room later?
I'm not sure about the tax bills.
Okay. It was in the packet. That's why I just wondered. And it's for that property. That's why I didn't know if maybe this was something you were addressing or not.
This is Shannon. Could I speak to that?
Yes.
So, um, we entered those into the packet just so that everybody's on the same page and understands how delinquent they are. So an all in kind of picture, um, past due taxes, utilities, as well as what they will now have on the lien.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. It just, it just wasn't mentioned. I didn't know if it was all under the same thing. Thanks, Shannon.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you for your attention to this matter and we will maintain this on the agenda until we see it through.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now I'd like to call to order, uh, the Rockingham Select Board Regular Meeting. Again, it's Tuesday, November 3rd. Time is now 6:14. Uh, are there any additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and/or pressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting? Have none? Need to approve the minutes, uh, from October 20th?
Move to approve.
A motion made and seconded to approve minutes, October 20th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Minutes approved. Public comment on items that are not on the agenda, three minutes per person. I, I can't tell if anyone's there. If I don't hear Shannon say something, we'll move on.
Nobody has anything that I can see.
Okay. Uh, managers report.
Couple of items received, uh, some correspondence from some residents who live out in, uh, off of Lower Bartonsville who had some issues with, uh, speeding and, and some issues about traffic control. I think this information was shared with you once before, but, uh, previously Chuck had worked with, uh, some folks to get some speed studies done. That was one of the areas that was part of the speed studies. Just looking at what the, uh, 85th percentile speed was on the area when they did study back in August. Um, that area came up at 32 miles an hour with an average speed of 27 miles an hour. So it's a little bit above the posted limit of, of 25, but it certainly isn't one of the areas where you're seeing 40s and 45s in terms of the speeds that we did monitor in that time. So we'll work on some additional enforcement. I think the neighborhood is looking for some additional presence. We'll try to work on that, but I just want to give you a heads up that that's an ongoing issue. And I'll share this correspondence with you, um, as we go forward.
Uh, can I just speak to that for a quick second?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, there's a couple of issues with that, with the speed thing that they did. First of all, they put it right on the corner where everybody breaks. So I don't think it was a good indication of the speed. And clearly since I live here, I know, and I hear these complaints daily from my, uh, my neighbors. Um, and there are people who are speeding at those levels. Um, and we have a preschool on the street. So there's a lot of concerns because it's only a matter of time before something happens. I've also heard from Upper Bartonsville residents who have the same complaints about Cambridge Port Road and Parker Hill Road and, and Brockways Mills. So it would be something that I think we need to discuss further.
Noted. Thank you. Yes, Peter.
Scott, do we, have we made any progress on getting, cause I'm going to take the minutes. I know Kathleen sent an email out that she wasn't taking them anymore.
We have addressed that temporarily and when the executive assistant gets here, they would be addressing it going forward.
Thank you very much. There's a blank seat over there. That's why I was just wondering.
No, she is going to do it for us. She's just not here physically.
And these are being recorded tonight so we can get them. Okay. That's all.
Okay. Uh, anything else? Good. Thank you. Okay. Number one, item number one, uh, Camilla Listers, errors, omissions and additions. I did see her here, right?
Yes, I'm here. And, uh, this is a follow-up from the last meeting where I pointed out that I needed to correct the document that you had for a decimal point, which actually, you know, somewhat of a difference. So you now have a corrected form for approval. Um, the, just to remind you, these, uh, changes relate to some direction from property valuation and review as to how the, how these properties should be organized in the grand list regarding their utility. Uh, declared, declared value versus the land. And in fact, today I had a conversation with PBR staff about another one. So I think I will probably be bringing you one more before the year's end of the same, same reason, but this is the one that was already, you know, you've already had it and it's been warned and everything. So I told them, no, I can't add it to tonight's. I've got to go through the. Are there any questions I could answer for anybody about it?
Uh, there doesn't seem to be, uh, this Peter, there didn't seem to be a, uh, a copy. Anybody has to sign, but I've got one here in my packet. So we can use that. Oh, you got one? I didn't see it passed around.
We're all set. It was just the, the decimal point from the last time we went over this, right?
Yeah.
Yes, essentially. So that, so that what was written under Bellis Falls Village was a, a full value instead of the grand list number. So it's all been corrected for that.
We'll just approve this one and then you'll may have one more for us, you're saying, right?
Yeah, I can't, before the end of the year, I will be.
Okay.
Bring you one more.
No problem. Thank you.
All right.
You have a question or motion?
Motion to approve the errors, omissions and additions for the grand list 2020, 2021 as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve, uh, errors, omissions and additions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you and we'll see you soon.
Bye. Thanks.
Bye-bye. Number two. Uh, the rec department update. We have Mr. Ryan Studley here. Good evening.
It's on. Just, uh, yeah, the, the mic light's on.
You have an update for us?
Yes, on the, I believe there was the question of the mini split heat pump being installed in at the rec. And what was the other one?
Axon River Agreement. Yeah.
So my original thing for the heat pump mini split is it's going to help with, uh, supply immediate heat, which will cause less propane to be used because we have just radiant heat, the heat for the whole rec. So when we have parities down in the future, instead of going in there and turning it, uh, radiant heat up to 65, I leave it at 60. Just didn't, I turn it up to 65 for parities on weekends, stuff like that. I think you just hit that heat button for an hour or two and it'll heat up the place fine. Um, and also supply enough AC for the winter because I have a big AC unit in the window right now. So by installing that, it's going to save a lot of more energy. You can also provide a cool place if someone has any type of heat element or anything like that during the summertime.
How much was it?
It's going to, I think the whole thing's going to be about 50, 800 bucks.
Did we budget for it?
It's in, I have money this year.
Do you remember how much that, we just replaced it since I've been on this board. So within the last. Not the mini split. I think we'd all like a mini split in our home, but we just replaced the unit up there that runs your radiant heat within the last four years.
Yeah, we fixed it. Yeah. We didn't, I didn't replace it. I just fixed it.
It was a $7,000, four to $7,000 repair, which I, I asked about that the last time.
All right. So yeah, I got, I got fixed. That's the, for the radiant heat and for the hot water up there. So this is a separate thing. This is a mini, uh, mini split to put in for AC during the summertime and hot days and then substantive heat.
Have you done a, a cost analysis as far as payback?
Um, I haven't really looked into it, but I know it's, I mean, ever since I put the change in, changing the lights up there and taking away the vending machines, it's, our power bill has gone down way like, I think, believe at least a thousand dollars.
How about revenue loss from not having the vending machines though?
Um, nothing because they never really ever gave me the money that they were supposed to. Give me, they're supposed to give me 10 cents for every purchase. I never received it. So that's why I just ended it with them.
Really?
Yeah. So I think the company had some, their own problems. So I just didn't, I just wiped my hands of it.
Yep.
So I think in the long run, it was just, was basically a wash.
Okay.
Amount of electricity for both vendor machines is to be run in 24 hours a day.
Right. Yep.
The system that was repaired runs on propane?
Yep.
Do you feel you're going to save on propane using this mini split?
Um, when we need, uh, especially for the fall, when we don't need to have the heat on. Yeah. So when during the fall, because I really don't turn the heat on until November or right now, December. So when it's colder out, I can just sit there and turn that on just for a quick hour of heat. And then not try to turn on that propane because it has to heat the whole building before it. So that's going to waste a lot of propane in my eyes. So.
Yeah. Radiant heat's not meant for buildings like that.
So that's my, that's my, that's a talking to my father who's been doing this for 45 years and just a couple of other plumber guys, you know, just saying, you know, that would be a good addition to that. It's going to save a lot of energy also for the summertime for AC. Cause I have to have AC because that building gets way too hot. The first year that we had it open, it was a 90 degree day. It was warmer inside the place than it was outside. We just have to heat in there.
Gaetano, I have a question. I'm assuming as a municipality, we don't qualify for any of the rebates some of these, these heat pumps give.
It's in, uh, it's in the, in the thing, like, kind of like when I got the lights. It's in the quote when, uh, got the, the lights picked up with the tennis courts this year. It's in the part of the rebate, uh, this year for the lights getting fixed at the rec. On the tennis courts, it was 50 bucks. Last year when I had the lights repaired and transit, uh, switched over to LED on the basketball court, it was 220 bucks. So it was like a hundred and $70 difference just from one year to the next. Um, but it's in the, it's in the cost of the estimate of our install of the thing.
Okay. Thanks.
Keep track of our propane expenses and our electric and make sure that we keep you up to date. If we're not achieving what we expected with this.
I mean, to me, it was just a surprise to hear that you put in a new unit that costs 5,800 bucks at a department that we've tried to, we, that's why I asked the question. That's why I'm asking it again tonight. And then you have a question about that, Peter?
I have no question about that, but I got a question about the $5,300 expense on the LED tennis court lights. That's wasn't budgeted, I don't think either. Um, didn't plan for that anyway.
It was not planned. Um, that was part of that thing, um, Chuck presented to you guys. I gave him a list of things that, you know, something we're going, I would be able to, be able to do this year by not having our regular, uh, year this year. So I said, I wanted to spend some of the money that I was going to have just to do updates on projects now and not way down the future. So, and I'm going to still be way under budget. Um, because usually I have my day camp with the wages. I mean, I have five people at 40 hours a week and I didn't do that. So I'm just, I'm going to be hiring on my building update and repair and stuff like that. But my other lines are going to be really, really low in my overall budget. I think it's going to be under still easily. Um, I'm just trying to do some projects to help ease the, any down the road type of, you know, projects that, you know, we're going to see, we're going to need down the end of the road. And the lights, the lights had to be updated, um, at the tennis courts. And that's going to, in the long run, that's going to save, uh, with the LED itself. There were eight thousand, uh, light bulbs going out one time for, you know, I have them run for about two and a half, three hours. So in the long, it's going to pay for itself.
What, uh, what's the rope tow status? Has it been inspected this year and does it need any?
I just got the paperwork.
Service or maintenance?
I just got the paperwork at the end of last week to, uh, put in for the inspection. Um, going to put that in. I'm going to call the inspector and hopefully get it done within the next week or two. It's been, it's been mowed. It looks pretty good up there. I'm going tomorrow to do the funnel weed whacking around the fences up on top and on bottom and pull the rope down. That's my plan for tomorrow. And the furnace is getting cleaned and checked tomorrow also.
Do you fire that thing up a couple of times in the summer, the rope tow and make sure it's, does it need service?
I don't do that because of the ingrown, everything around it. I don't want it to be. What I do is we get it checked when he comes in, uh, November. I don't know how that thing's old, but. But no, we don't like, we usually don't ever run it. I've never run it during the summer, anything like that. Just this year, we now with the trail there, we put the rope up and that's a chore in itself to, to get the rope up out of the way. And I think it's going to help with the vandalism too, that we've had. That was like, I don't know, nine, 10 years ago when someone did cut it. Um, but now it's up out of the way. I think there's a lot more people walking it. And so a lot more eyes on there.
Anything else?
Um, the lease deal at the Saxton River Rec, I talked to Samantha, I almost called her Perry, Fletcher.
Oh.
Um, that's our maiden name. Uh, she says that, that $2,000, um, really helps go towards helping this, the maintenance of the, um, volunteer people buying gas, um, mowing the lawn over there and just trying to, the phone, electricity, um, stuff like that. Um, because they run on donations, uh, and they don't take any money from anywhere. So it's kind of like, uh, you know, a good gesture for us to use, uh, help go over there and provide their lifeguards and give them at least a couple of thousand dollars to help up, obtain, you know, upkeep the, the place over there. Um, she says it, you know, it's really great, you know, they put, usually use that money to put more sand in, fix the lifeguard chairs, the benches over there for people to come out and use. Um, you know, it's a, it's really just to help people go out there and swim for free during the summertime.
What's the status of the, uh, restrooms out there? Are they still in disorder?
Um, that's one thing that I talk, I'm going to be talking to Sam about. Um, it's been a long time since they've been updated. Um, that was the main concern about the summer. There was no sinks in there to use hands. I said, it's not going to be a CDC, you know, you know, applicable for that. So I mean, like, we gotta, we gotta do something out there. So. And she's all about, you know, doing whatever she can out there and getting, I think, volunteer people, you know, people will come out and volunteer sometime. Um, hopefully, you know.
The other, the other thing too, if you look at that lease, there is a provision in there, uh, that we are allowed to store snow out there.
Yep.
Uh, so I don't know if that's what they figure they're going to be.
That's, she also said that.
Covering part of that.
Yeah. She said that's kind of like.
Cause I know, I know we do it at the high school up there at the parking lot out there in the winter and they don't charge. I don't think we pay them to store it. So.
And she said that too.
So, you know, maybe they should, we find a different way for them to.
It's $2,000 and it goes a long way out there for them. So this helps them, you know, not trying to, because they do a lot of fundraises and they do the chili cook off, the fishing derby, you know, and those are the two main ones. And it's, you know, it does give a lot of people in this town a place to go for free. Um, it used to be used a lot more than it does right now, but.
Are they, are they checking the waters, quality out there?
Yep.
I know that we've had issues with that before and I know it's really down.
Two years ago.
Truly lowered down quite a bit. I don't know whether that's.
Well, they did that on purpose with no one, well, during the summer. It's on a pump. It's on activated pump. It's on a spring that feeds.
Yeah, I know it's on a spring. Beaver ponds back there. So you know what that means.
It's on a spread, uh, spring fed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, so it has a little pump on its own. It puts fresh water in that. I think it's like 1,500 gallons an hour or something like that.
Any other questions? Susan, anything?
Nope. Sorry. I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Ryan, for the update.
Um, also it must, uh, just came to my mind, just get the VPA just announced the regulations for what they're going to do, be doing for basketball. So I'm going to be trying to make some type of deal with the school, hopefully, um, seeing if I can get in to use their facilities. I know right now they have a no visitor policy. So maybe this might lax it enough where we'll be able to get in just kids and coaches to, uh, just to be able, just to use that for, uh, the winter. And I'm planning on doing that, no earlier than after Christmas anyways, just because of what's been going on. Um.
What about wrestling? Any room?
There's no wrestling.
No.
They eliminated wrestling and indoor track. So the only thing they're doing this winter is, uh, basketball. Um, it's good indoor track because this, all, all the indoor track is used at colleges and wrestling is just more like football. So too much touching.
They could do two-hand touch.
A lot of more touching than basketball than people realize, but. Um, so that's where I'm standing with that. Um, not going to be able to have the adult volleyball. Um, for that, for that purposes of that, but still planning on doing the ski, skito and also ice rink. Do some ice rinking or ice skating that night up on the tennis, on the basketball court. So I use the light, leave the lights on so people have a plant, a place to go at night and skate for free. So. I plan on doing some Friday events too up there.
And we're going to do fall leaf cleanup on tennis courts this year?
Yeah.
Before it gets too bad?
Waiting for all the leaves to drop, which they finally did.
Oaks?
Yeah. I just, it's one of those things where.
Yeah, they ain't quite.
They fall late and.
Ain't quite done.
You get an ice storm, then they're going to stay there until the spring.
Yep.
So, yeah, I've been getting to them pretty good in the last couple of years. Of course, look, been looking beautiful the last couple of years. A lot more people using, uh, pickleball up there too. Pickleball lines up there and I've been seeing a lot of pickleball playing up there during the summer. So.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you. I don't know if you've been here, but we were being updated when Chuck was, was sitting over there. All the, your creativity this summer for the kids and the, and from everything, from the drive-in movies to all of it, you know, you, you did.
Hocus pocus went off, well, went off well, even though it was a 10 to 12 mile an hour winds of me holding the rope of the thing like that for an hour and 15 minutes. And I didn't think much and I hadn't just shorts on and this, I'm still, I'm sitting there going, I go, I can't wait for this to be over. But we had, you know, all, we had 18 cars there and it was probably 70, 80 people. Had people show up an hour and a half with three family sized pizza and 10, it was a group of 10 of them. Like, jeez and girl, I guess we're going to be here tonight. We're good, you know, so it was a good ending of the, the fall thing, you know, plan on doing it.
Good.
Maybe even the spring. So.
Good job.
All right.
Thank you. Okay. We have, uh, number three, financials year to date. Anyone have any questions?
I have a lot, but I can.
I, yep, I'm here. Do, I can take questions first and.
Yeah. As usual, I'm the pain index, got a bunch of them, but, uh, not too bad. Um, when going, going through this printout, um, I noticed on page four of 18, the town manager, uh, miscellaneous and advertising is way up advertised at 197, 197%. And miscellaneous is at 383% over budget. Uh, doesn't he ask stuff COVID? I think it may be.
So the manager's advertising is the advertising because we had to hire a manager. Typically that line item is for advertising for RFPs or things of that nature, or maybe a miscellaneous position we need to fill. But we did, um, a large advertising through ICMA that you guys chose to do. And so that, um, will affect the town and the village budget for manager advertising.
Okay. Um, on page five, the office operations, the phone and internet and IT support.
Yeah. So the phone and internet, um, we, our contract will be done in January and we will move on to a new provider, which will be substantially less. We were stuck in a contract with Mitel and that's ending. So, and Scott and I have already discussed how we'll move forward.
Okay. Now I noticed that the planning and zoning, there's administrative assistant, uh, amount of $8,500.
So that, yeah, so, um, we did not fulfill our full contract with Joan until after July 1st. So there is some payout to her in there. And then, um, Leah Clark was filling in for support. And so her wages went to that line item as well.
Okay. Um, town owned property, I think I got the answer to this one from Gary, but, um, that was a, there's. That was a, there's maintenance item of 47,800. Does that got to do with the charging system? It's on page six.
The, the answer is yes, right Gary?
Yes.
You know the answer, Peter?
Well, I asked Gary, but I'm just trying to see if that's. She coincided with the same answer.
Oh yes, of course.
Oh, okay. That's all. I didn't hear anything. That's all.
I got the information.
You're asking Gary, I'm sorry.
All right, no, no problem. I just, you know, just, I thought that was the case, but I know you had a grant, we had got a grant for that, so.
Um. We do have a grant, um, we just, we still do need to recognize the expense.
Right, yeah, I understand that. Um. Same page. Uh, recycled material supplies, 124%. And I notice, uh, food scraps is way up, uh, we're getting rid of that stuff. Is it 77 and a half percent? I think we need to start looking at those prices increases that we had mentioned earlier on.
Sure. So recycling materials and supplies, there was a lot that the recycling center was lacking to come up to code. Um, so we did make the decision to go ahead and, and buy some materials and supplies that we desperately needed. And the laws changed regarding, uh, getting rid of the food waste. So we are dealing with that and we are looking at changing the pricing. Um, we're also looking to hire somebody to run the facility full time. So that'll all come in time.
Yeah, cause that, that, we weren't charging before because it wasn't mandatory, but now it's mandatory. So I mean, there's the, the cost of disposals exceeding, gonna exceed. What we've got budgeted. Plus there's a ton of, uh, containers up there and they're usually full every day.
Yeah, that's definitely on our radar.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I think, can I just interject here for a second? I think we really have to consider whether charging is just gonna have people throw it away and we don't want that.
Exactly, yeah.
I think we need a little, uh, you know, there needs to be some real thought put into this.
Throw, throw away their compost?
Yes, with their garbage. If you're gonna charge a garbage bag.
The fact you compost it at your house.
But many people don't compost everything at their house, like bones and things like that, that can't be composted at your house.
All right.
I thought, well, I thought what we do is an analysis of what others are doing and, um, if they're charging a relatively low wage and they're still seeing, um, good output, then we could follow suit. Or if best practice is that we don't charge, we can reevaluate our line item for next year.
And also I think we ought to look at, uh, the, uh, woods, uh, chips that we used to have available for people to take. Right now, whoever grinds them up, takes them with them, we don't get them. Uh, I know that, uh, mulch especially. You buy mulch today, it's usually five bucks a bags, as cheap as you can buy it for. And even if we sold it for half of that, we'd be still ahead of the game. It would cost us eight.
We'll definitely need to evaluate the entire recycling center. We just, we need to get somebody in that seat to be able to do it.
Yeah, no problem. I just bring enough for discussion. Um, okay, uh, page nine. There's an item under unsafe buildings that says Center, One Center Street for about $800. Why is it under unsafe business, uh, buildings instead of health and welfare or something? Think the only thing we've done with that property is the health order.
I can, um, pull that and send it to you guys as a full board tomorrow.
No problem. I just, it just stuck out there, cause that's the only charge on there. That's all.
Yep, absolutely.
Gee, you gotta take care of that.
I'm trying, I'm sorry.
Uh, and recreation, same page, you got office supplies at 196%. What was that? Was that all to do with this COVID stuff too? Is any of that gonna be on COVID?
So all of, anything related to COVID, um, is expense to the COVID lines, but, um, again, I can pull that, uh, detail and send that to you guys too.
Yeah, and the maintenance wages are also at 103%. I don't know what maintenance, we got anybody up there doing maintenance, but.
Did Ryan leave already?
Yep.
Oh, I wish we had asked him while he was here.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry Shannon, I didn't see your email until he had left.
No, that's okay.
Uh, page 11, uh, this will be the last one I got, um, the cinema. R and M facility is at 308%. Uh, I think that's got through all the COVID stuff that was being done down there. The painting and all that stuff.
I'm sorry, which line item is this?
Page 11. On page 11, 18, under the cinema. Expenses, R and M facility is at 308%. I just wondered.
So there's, there's been a lot of, um, things done that is not COVID. Um, and we, uh, made, uh, Chuck Wise as, um, interim manager made the decision that that needed to take place and our expenses will be extremely low compared to, I mean, we're at 9% as opposed to 34%. And so it was just a decision that was made that we needed to, to make some changes and do some upgrades if we were gonna run the cinema moving forward.
Okay.
I mean, the overall number is 9.48%.
Correct.
We're looking at percentages here. That'd be the one that sticks out to me.
Right, but there's also no income. So that's the other balancing factor here. Um, I just had a question. So it, and you did, you did reply to me that that does include the curtains that we've been dealing with for years now and the bathroom renovation. Was there renovations done in the bathrooms?
There was not. There was some COVID expense. It was expense to COVID such as, um, hand free, uh, sanitizer pumps and things of that nature. So we could comply. Um, and that was expense to COVID. But yeah, so a- also in that repairs and maintenance was the $7,000 for the fireproofing of the curtains.
Okay, well, I just wanna pass on a compliment that I re- I received. I don't, I don't deserve it, but someone had mentioned today, um, they went to the theater the other day and they were very pleased about everything. And especially the bathrooms were the cleanest they've ever seen them, so.
Yeah, Tim, Tim and Jen.
Yep.
And Don Hasham, um, deserve an award. What they've done is absolutely amazing.
And all the, all the lobby renovations were, uh, didn't cost us a dime. Volunteer, maybe material, right? They volunteered all their time to do all the.
That's correct. I think Tim and Jen have put in.
And, and also in addition to saving money, did Chief McGuinness working out something to take the curtains down to save significant amount of money? Is that still happening or?
So what happened is, um, we had been quoted a substantial amount and that involved removing the curtains, mailing them out, having them done, shipped back, shipped, shipped back and then put back up. Um, Sean found us a company that came and did them while they were up and it basically cut the cost in half.
Excellent.
Right.
Good job on that one. Um, also just one note on your analysis for the recycling center, this Monday operation. Um, or it seems to be a losing proposition, uh, I've talked.
This week, we actually had a really great day on Monday and I think the more advertising we do and the more people that know that it's open, um, we did, we had our best Monday yet, equivalent to some of our Wednesdays. Um, so I think that if we give it some time, we'll definitely see an increase in individuals that attend on Monday.
Yeah, no problem. I'm just trying to, you know, look at costs versus, uh, revenue. That's all. We're making a new dollar for an old one.
You got more?
Nope, I'm all done.
Anyone else? All set, Sue?
Um, yeah, I think Peter had a lot of the, uh, questions I had. Um, and then Shannon also answered some directly, um, to me, so. I'm good.
Okay, great. And we're always free to ask Shannon a question on finance if we have them when they come up, right Shannon?
That's correct. Uh, also Guy Thomas, can I just add a couple of things?
Yes.
So, um, as of the end of Q1, um, Andy Howarth has saved us approximately $88,000 in highway. That savings will not go away. That was from running with a short staff and doing whatever he needed to do to make that happen. So we will continue to see savings based on his staffing. He took the efforts to hire part-time plowers instead of full-time and, um, more seasonal wo- workers at a lower wage. So he has definitely gone out of his way to make sure that this budget is gonna come in significantly under budget. But to date, it's about 88,000 under budget.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Andy. And all the rest of them. Okay, thank you Shannon. Have some tea.
I have one more question not to do with this, but it's November. When are we gonna start doing the process of the next budget?
Yeah, so we are, um, I think Scott and I are going to discuss this week, the calendar and look at what we've done in previous years and then we will start meeting with department heads and, um, getting your schedule for the board meetings out to you guys for approval.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next we have the, number four, development, Mr. Gary Fox.
Microphone on?
Should be the lights on there.
Uh, so, uh, the first item is an area wide brownfields plan. And, uh, that's a grant through the Wyndham Regional Commission. Uh, they do the contracting and manage the consultant on it. And it, uh, provides, uh, provides the basis for working through a lot of the, um, unutilized, underutilized, um, uh, properties uh, that still exist, uh, in the village, mostly, uh, commercial industrial focused. Uh, it is brownfields money, so the intention is, um, there's contamination from the industrial era that needs, uh, cleanup. Uh, there's, uh, the area described, uh, starts in the waterfront with the, the TLR Wyman Flint Buildings, works through, um, uh, the lower mill, uh, the, the Napa Building area, uh, train station. And it identifies, um, what the probable, uh, contamination is, costs for cleanup. Um, recommends, uh, a sequence for working through the properties. Uh, includes, um, market analysis and indicates what, um, end uses would be successful for the type of building and for our, uh, region and the times that we're in. It is, uh, it's a good process to support, uh, projects moving forward. So as we have, uh, uh, development plans and we apply for funding, uh, this report, uh, provides a lot of backup for that. And I don't know if folks are familiar with, uh, with Bennington, the Putnam Block Project. Uh, that's how they, um, were able to fund that project was starting with a brownfields area wide plan. And, uh, we developed a big chunk of the Bennington downtown. Well, it, it, it's still in process, but, um, included a, a TIF funding, a, a stack of about 20 different, um, uh, funding, uh, methods.
You need a motion? Any questions?
Um, yeah, so the, the motion would be, um, it's listed in your packet.
Approve filing, submittal and response. Anybody have that?
Yep, the, the, is this the document?
That's the request for proposals, yes.
Okay, there says something about a form here. And it's signature, the select board has to sign and authorize, uh, Scott to sign any documents. But there's no place to sign here. I don't see one.
Right, so thi- this is the signature page.
All right.
And the, um, so that's the request for proposals. The proposal is the, um, three-page document. And it, the, the proposals due November 20th and it, it will change a little just in terms of, um, tightening up the language a little on, um, on page three and cleaning it up. But that's the, this is the basic substance of the submittal. Um, and that's, uh, page four, which is the signature page for the select board.
Ready for the motion? Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, um, approve the filing, submittal in response to the Wyndham Regional Commission Brownfield Area Wide RFP and signing a submittal by the select board and authorized municipal manager to execute all related documents.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, to approve filing, submittal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, we need to authorize Scott pickup for the next couple, Gary?
Yes, so, um, the next one is, um, uh, there's, there's one motion for, um, uh, B and C, which is, um, authorizing Scott as the municipal authorizing official for the, um, Vermont Community Development Program and uh, there was a, a recommendation, um, uh, from the program and, uh, Scott agreed with it. Uh, we have so many of this municipal planning grants and, uh, development block grants. Um, and, uh, there's a lot of tight deadlines on them and they recommended having an alternate, uh, signatory um, four times when, um, uh, Scott's away on vacation, for instance. So the motion includes, um, uh, authorizing me as an alternate, uh, for when, uh, Scott's away.
Okay, that's written right there. And anyone have that motion?
I, I do have one adjustment to the motion actually. So in addition to the community development block grants, um, I didn't realize this, but the, the, the program indicated that the municipal planning grants are also part of that same program. Um, and so there is, um, uh, uh, there, there is an, um, an additional motion under that, um, B and C. Um, and I will, I'll, I'll give that to, um, Peter for after B and C.
Okay, so after B and C?
Yes, yeah.
So it start with B. VCDP on Peter. Anybody?
So you want the motion to authorize the municipal manager? Is that what you're looking for right now?
Yes, please, yeah.
All right, Mr. Chairman, uh, I move that we authorize municipal manager Scott pickup as the municipal authorizing official and development director Gary Fox's alternate municipal authorizing official for the Vermont Community Development Program. VCDP and add Scott pickup to all open VCDP grants and applications.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to authorize municipal manager Scott pickup and Gary Fox's alternate for, uh, VCDP grants and applications, uh. All those in favor would signify by saying aye.
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 That one passes. And then.
So this one that, uh, Peter has right now is, um, is in a subset of uh, adding Scott to the all VCDP grants and applications. Um, one of the open applications is a municipal planning grant and they indicated they need this separate resolution in addition that Peter has in his hands.
To this one?
Yeah, so this one right here. It's kind of a long one, but they need that to add and to open. Grant.
So do we need to read this thing or?
Yes, sorry.
Oh, you're not. I know you're not, Gary. Yeah, you just wanna see if I can read it right. Well, if my glasses don't fog up, uh. Amended resolution for municipal planning grant, whereas the municipal manager, municipality of Rockingham has applied for funding as provided for in the FY 20 Budget Act and was, has received an award of funds under subdivisions. And whereas the Department of Housing and Community Development has offered a grant agreement to this municipality for said funding. And whereas the municipality has undergone a change in municipal staff, which necessitates updating the Department of Housing and Community Development to allow new municipal staff access to the grant files. Now therefore be resolved, one, that the legislative body of this municipality has entered into and agreed to the requirements and obligations of this grant program, including. entered into and agreed to the requirements and obligations of this grant program, including a commitment to match funds. Two, A, Scott Pickup, uh, municipal manager who is either the chief executive officer, CEO, as defined by ten BSA, subchapter six eight three, parentheses eight, or is the select board member, the town manager, the city manager, or the town administrator is hereby designated to serve as the municipal authorizing official M slash AO for the grants management online system and telegrants and to execute, execute the grant agreement and other such documents as may be necessary to secure these funds. To B, alternate authorizing official for redundancy. Shannon Burbler, finance director, who is either the chief executive officer, as defined by ten BSA six eighty-three, parentheses eight, or a select board member, is the town manager, city manager, the town administrator, is hereby designated to serve as a municipal authorizing official for the grants management online system and telegrants and to execute the grant agreement and other such documents as may be necessary to secure these funds. To C, that Gary Fox, uh, development director is hereby designated as a grant administrator, the person with the overall administrative responsibility for a municipal planning grant program activities related to the application and any subsequent grant agreement provisions.
Second.
Good job.
Peter's made that wonderful motion, it's been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So that'll be available for the minutes, hopefully?
Yes, yep.
Great job. I'm a little confused, that was...
Too much.
So that was, um, uh, yeah, that was part of B and C, so that we're on D.
Okay. Gotcha.
For point of information, and Gary, you can update, but I believe one of our open items that we're still pursuing is the HVAC improvements for the Opera House.
Yes.
Theater.
Yep.
And I believe we're on track, if that's successful, to get that possibly before the end of this year.
Yes, yep.
Which would be a substantial improvement, would help us a lot with, uh, making improvements with air exchange and making that theater, you know, easier to cool and to also, um, heat, so that one has a lot of promise.
Yeah, we were notified today that staff is recommending to its board, the VCDP board, to, um, uh, fund, uh, all of that except the, the small planning piece. And that, uh, board meeting is at the end of this week, so, um, uh, we'll know next Monday.
Excellent.
Right.
Fingers crossed, but that could be a really good, uh, you know, a good opportunity for us to do some major improvements.
Thank you. Okay, so D's resolution, uh, read PM one resolution in the packet.
Yep, got one. I got it, Gary, I think same thing. All right, we are at a grant agreement resolution, single grantee, Form PM one. Whereas Town of Rockingham has applied for funding under the Vermont Community Development Program as provided for in ten BSA, chapter twenty-nine, and has received an award for funds of, under said provisions. And whereas Agency of Commerce and Community Development has tendered a grant agreement number zero seven one one zero dash IG dash two zero one nine rock dash seventeen to this municipality for said funding. Now therefore be it resolved as follows, that the legislative body of this municipality accepts and agrees to the terms and conditions of said grant agreement, that Gary Fox, development director, is hereby designated as the person with overall administrative responsibility for the VCDP activities related to this grant agreement, and that Scott Pickup, municipal manager, who is either the chief executive officer, as defined by ten BSA six eighty-three, parentheses eight, or is the town manager, the city manager, the town administrator hereby designated as the authorizing official to execute the grant agreement and other such documents as may be necessary to secure these funds.
Second.
Pass this third day in November twenty twenty, you need to date. Second, uh, we have, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So, um, the next one, um, uh, PM one is municipal policies and codes. And, um, uh, so the recommendation on this, um, uh, on this motion is just to read the first paragraph, and then, um, uh, the memo lists each of the policy. So, uh, for instance, there's a full page of language under equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity policy, is just reading that policy name and, and stating as presented in the packet. Um, and there's about, um, you know, ten of those policies or so.
Okay, so you just need, you just need this part, print.
Yeah, so let's see here. Let me give you a page two of that, it has them all, um, listed out.
My God, Gary, you finally got my name spelled right on this one.
So, um, so going through and just, just saying this part, equal employment policy as presented.
Okay.
Saves eight pages of our reading.
Yeah, I guess so. Mr. Chairman, this is the, uh, MP one policy, uh, equal employment opportunity policy required by two twenty-four CFR five seventy dash a point nine oh four and modeled on the state of Vermont, state government EEO plan for FY twenty seventeen as presented in the meeting packet. Fair housing policy required by twenty-four CFR five seventy dash a point nine oh four and modeled on twenty-four CFR part six is presented in the meeting packet. Use of excessive force policy, forty-two USC section five three oh four, parentheses I, as presented in the meeting packet. Policy on the use of VCTB funds, um, for federal lobbying, heard anti-lobbing amendment thirty-one USC thirteen fifty-two, as presented in the packet. Code of Ethics for Administration of Vermont Community Development Program, twenty-four CFR five seventy point four eight nine, parentheses H, is presented in the meeting packet. Drug Fee Workplace Act of nineteen eighty-eight, forty-one USC seven oh one, et cetera, as presented in the meeting packet. Subrecipient Oversight Monitoring Policy Required by Uniform Guidance Two CFR Part two hundred as presented in the meeting packet. Whistleblower Protections, as presented in the meeting packet. You want me to read that off too?
No, but I would, um, would, just a, a friendly amendment that, um, uh, that the Town of Rockingham governing body is adopting these policies and codes.
Okay. About that wording, does anybody catch that?
Second.
Trying to repeat it.
Motion has been made and seconded with the amendment, uh, Town of Rockingham. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, there's a motion here to certify that the financial management policies and procedures manual as identified in the table of contents tabs from the general ledger through assets slash RLF are the adopted financial management policies and procedures for the town and authorize the municipal managers concur with the adopted financial management policies and procedures and sign when familiarized and in concurrence and authorize the town treasurer to concur with the adopted financial management policies and procedures and sign when familiarized and in concurrence.
Second.
I got that.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I was just gonna, uh, say that that, um, the policies and procedures are on the table up there, the red binder, if anyone wanted, um, needed to see any content. And, um, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Gary.
Thank you. And I'd like to just say thank you to Gary. As you can tell, chasing down paperwork and all of the requirements for all of these various, uh, sources of funds is a painstaking labor, and, and Gary does a tremendous job. And I know it's really sometimes very tedious and, you know, detail-oriented work, but, you know, the good news is I think we're, we're primed to get some nice return on this investment of his time, and I think we'll see some really positive, positive, uh, outcomes from that. So we just wanted to thank Gary for all that.
Yeah, I'll second that. And I think he, I think he enjoys it too, and he's good at it.
Are you leaving, Gary? Are you leaving, or are you staying?
I'm here for, um...
You have a question?
Yes, I do.
Wonderful, before we move on?
Yeah, since here, if I may.
Oh, of course.
In relation to the, um, I know this is getting, uh, gone dark over there, it's Flatiron Building, and I'm just wondering what's, because I've heard some stories. We have money launder loaned out. Did we do the UCC filings on any of the equipment?
We did, the, the, um, equipment and the assets and the, um, revolving loan fund, uh, chair was, um, uh, working with the, uh, business owner, um, offering for whether we wanted to take the assets and sell it as the town or for her to sell it, and she felt like, um, the, the owner, Julie Jones, that, uh, she was motivated to get the most money for it because she is personally secured, uh, for the loan in addition to the UCC filing. So she's selling the, um, expensive equipment owned. Yeah.
That's the reason I'm asking, because I did hear that it was being sold, and I wanted to make sure that we had our claws into that.
Yes, yep. And so once she has that piece done, we will, um, call a meeting of the revolving loan fund committee and meet with her to modify the payment turns for what's left so that she can manage it from her personal, um, income.
Okay, we're good.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
Uh, Gary, I have one more question too, if possible. Um, maybe you mentioned this earlier, but what's the status on the charging station? When is it going to be completed, or is it, and I just missed it?
Uh, no, so, um, we've, uh, you know, we've done the procurement for, um, uh, Green Mountain Power to run, uh, the, the three-phase and the single-phase, the two services, um, from the pole over to the top of the waypoint, and we've, um, had procurement on the, uh, electrical work, probably about fifteen thousand dollars to run the, um, uh, supply the mass for the service and run it to the ground, and, um, uh, done the procurement on the excavation for, uh, running the, uh, service to the two sites, um, the, the direct current fast charge on the, uh, east side servicing the, um, the, uh, the train station, the Amtrak stop, and the level two charger on the west side servicing, um, Canal House Housing Unit and the shops, um, uh, set up that way, that's how it had the points to score for the grant, um, because of those services. And, um, uh, pour the pads and to install the equipment and put in bollards to protect them because it is expensive equipment. And that work will be happening, uh, probably from about next week till the first week in December. And once, once the work's completed and paid for and commissioned and they're up and running, we can, um, submit for reimbursement. The total cost will be about sixty-five thousand dollars, and the grant reimbursement's about, uh, fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Okay, so at this point, we're gonna move the next two, uh, to where they should go, uh, which will bring us to review agenda items for our November seventeenth meeting. Anybody have any?
Financials. Do we want to do them again? We just...
I, I don't need to. Would you like to?
We only do financials once a month, I don't, I don't issue them.
Usually it was the second, second, uh, meeting, but that's no big deal. Whichever's easier for you guys to do it.
I'm okay, we did them, we knocked them out for November, if that's okay. That okay, Peter?
Oh, yeah, they'll probably just bring it up.
I don't have anything at this time, if something comes up, we can, uh, get a hold of each other.
No, except for, I would like, um, regarding financials, at some point, an update on tax, um, delinquent taxes. I mean, I imagine there's no sense of doing it until after the next tax payments are due, but an update when we can get a chance to see how we're...
That was exactly what we had planned, was after the next, um, tax payment was due, we would issue you guys a report.
All right, thanks, Shannon.
You have your hand up?
No, good, that's waving Gary's left.
You have something? Okay, so, uh, review agenda items for the next joint board, which is December twenty-ninth, which still, so far, we have the automated vehicle testing grounds. And anything else? Any, anyone can think of at this time?
Talking about transportation projects, I know that you've been in touch with DOT about a couple of bridge projects, and, and we've got a couple others that will, might impact traffic and, and detouring. So I think we'll maybe do them all together so that everyone gets a chance to see what's coming and have a conversation about it.
Two of the upcoming bridge projects are in the village, so it'd be good to... All right, uh, so we need to, we reviewed and approved orders, bills and warrants?
Motion to approve orders, bills and warrants.
Second for discussion?
Yes.
I just got a couple. The, on page three of the ten twenty-one report, uh, warrant report, uh, there was a charge seventy hundred dollars for garage toilets, highway garage toilets was, there a reason for that to be replaced, other than the fact they were crappy? Pardon me, uh, play on words.
Well, we had discussed that once, and I don't know if Chuck's here still, but he would have the concrete answer again, but it's...
They absolutely had to be replaced.
There you have it.
Okay, page four, uh, there was, I, I'm assuming that's still probably the last bill for the test, uh, test drilling down there at the Depot Street Bridge is forty-two hundred and fifty dollars. I, I think that's probably what it's for. It just says Depot Street Bridge with no real notation there.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Peter? I couldn't hear you.
On page four of the ten twenty-one, there was a, uh, charge from, uh, payment to AOT for forty-two hundred and fifty dollars. I assume that's for the last testing, uh, test holes they drilled or something.
I would have to get back to you on that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no big deal, I just, just wondering, it seems, because we don't have any, any money in the budget for that, so there's something we can look forward to in budget.
Sure, I will get that answer as well as the, um, other two detail reports for you.
Okay, thanks.
Good, sir?
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded, uh, approve orders, bills and warrants. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Other business, Susan?
I'm all set, thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, um, I know we talked about this earlier, about especially the existence, executive assistant, there's, are we advertising for those positions in the, in the recycle manager? I, I didn't know.
Yeah, it hasn't gone out.
Once for the, for the manager back when Chuck was here, and we didn't get any replies or any responses, so I'm just curious.
Had an update, so we're hoping we get a better turnout this time.
Yeah, okay, um, uh, just a few reminders, Town meeting's coming up, are we gonna do that? We gotta think about whether we're gonna do that virtual or in-person. I don't know what the seating is, the requirements may change, we don't know until we get there.
A lot could change.
Australian ballot vote, are we gonna vote the budget by Australian ballot? And that depends on whether we do it in-house or in-person or virtual. And then like the village did, do we want to put Australian ballot voting in the future years on there, on the, on the, the, uh, warning? Just something to think about. And just so you know, Hetty Green, the new owners already get people in there working to, have at it, so I noticed that this morning when I headed out of town. So, uh, hopefully things will move along, it's back on the tax roll. back on the tax rolls, I guess, and...
Yeah, Chuck and I want to meet with him and sort of get a sense of what his horizon for timing is, and, you know, just a, just sort of a, a chance to share some information. So we'll hopefully get that done soon.
And at the YMCA, I guess we got some new cattle fencing been put up. Kind of joked with the guys at the Highway Department, they put it up. Oh, there is that?
That's recycled from another job. It just looks a little better and gives another layer of security.
Do we know if that's under the unsafe building ordinance? Is that the charge to the Village, or is that part of the health orders only, just to take care of the persons that were living in the building? I don't know.
It's just more secure. They boarded it up, so you couldn't get in there, and then now it's just keeping not night watchmen or owners from out of there.
Given some of the condition of that building, I think the, the more perimeter we establish around that building, the better, you know, people that walk through it. It looked a little, a little bit concerning.
That it, Peter?
That's it, for me.
Question, I was gonna mention the fence, too, and just find out the cost, but I got the answer. So I'm gonna go off of Peter's. We need to pull permits for any work at the Hetty Green, or what, what do you mean, they're up there working?
I don't know. There was a couple of pickups up there, and they had two boxes out there and...
Big dumpster.
Tools and stuff. I think they're probably maybe just doing a run-through to see what's got to be done there. I don't know.
Anything for structural? My guesses are going through to see what's inside and maybe just...
Chuck and I had met that gentleman a while back when we heard there was a vehicle up there taking boards off. We went up and met that guy, and probably the same thing, kind of sizing it up. Nothing from me.
Sorry. Yeah, I just want to touch base to see where we're at timeframe-wise. We have that, I guess, the outside cabaret that we have on the north end of the square here, by the Chinese restaurant with PKs, et cetera. We're already getting into snow season. We've had some snowfall. Are we gonna be doing something to open up that sidewalk and that parking through there?
Did talk to that owner. He is supposed to be removing that, and he's been somewhat delinquent on doing that.
Okay.
He's gonna continue on. We'll see how far into November we actually go, and at some point, we'll just, we'll just say that's, you know, that's enough.
Yeah, I saw a car almost hit that the, the other day, and I thought...
It did, did get cleaned up a bit this week. If you notice, that kind of detour was all the way down to Canal Street. That's where the sign was, and it had those weird awning things. All that's cleaned up. It's kind of consolidated right in front of his place.
Yeah.
But then again, the question is snow and...
Yeah. I'd like to see that if we do that in the future, or whoever's here that does that, there's some probably emphasis placed on, and I know there's an expense, but Jersey barricades, because the individual I saw, she'd continued going towards the sidewalk, and if there was anybody there, they wouldn't have found.
Well, knock on wood, you remember, we did, we did discuss all that pretty good, and it happened quick because of our situation, and then we made it through a summer. So hopefully we can have more planning, should it ever have to happen again. Anything else?
No, we're good.
Ben?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, so...
I just got one more request. I'd like to continue to receive my hard copies of these agendas and backup information. It's kind of handy to have right in front of you.
Yeah, I would also. That, that helps out a lot. I mean, also, I don't have a printer, but...
Okay.
Trying to pull everything up on this phone here zaps the battery, and it's hard to see, to be honest with you.
Yep, we'll work with you on that.
Maybe you guys should budget $800 laptops for your select board, because it's all right here. I got one piece of paper. Redocent's right there.
Well, well...
Can I speak to that real quick, too?
Yes.
So yes, there would be a short-term expense, but I will say that the amount we've reduced in copies and paper has been significant recently, so I definitely would consider that. And these laptops, as there's turnover in the select board and trustees, we can hand them down from person to person.
Okay, thank you very much. So we have a executive session. Susan, if you want to call my telephone?
All right, the, the phone in that room is not set up?
I don't know.
Tried my hardest today.
We did our best to get the Zoom meeting going, so we're no IT crew here.
No, I understand that, but there used to be a phone there, and I just don't know why, what happened to it, so...
I think it has some, I don't know, Shannon might have the answer, but if you want to call my cellphone in a minute, I'll answer it, okay?
Well, no, I know that, but sometimes the connection is not very good, so that's why it'll land the more, would be better.
I agree.
There is a phone right there.
So...
Doesn't seem to be plugged in.
Yeah, it just needs to be plugged in. The phone's over there.
No, I plugged it in. I cannot get it to work, Susan. I tried everything. Yeah.
Next time...
Well, the IT company's coming tomorrow.
Very expensive IT company comes, we'll ask them.
Tomorrow Dominion Tech's coming, and I'm gonna have them set it up.
Perfect.
If we, if you could, just maybe it'd be nice to have a cord that would reach to where we're at, like right now. That way, you could all hear it, and whoever calls...
I think it'll come over here.
I don't know.
It will.
Yeah.
But yeah, well, they'll look at that tomorrow, okay?
All right.
And we're gonna get a motion here.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I move to find that premature public knowledge of, of labor relations agreements with employees will clearly place the municipality substantial disadvantage by negotiating strategy. That's the first one.
Motion's been made, seconded, to enter executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Second motion is I move the board into executive session to discuss union negotiations with, under provisions of Title I, Section 313A, one of the Vermont State statutes. Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to enter executive session. The reasons stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, in addition, invite the manager.
And we'll invite the manager into both. That's it, folks. We're gonna turn off the Zoom.